All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We opened the meeting at six-thirty, went into executive session, came out. We'll do the roll call again just for purpose.
All five Selectmen present, as well as Town Council and the Town Administrator.
Pledge of Allegiance is next. Mr. Tropiano, your turn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic over which it stands, one nation, united God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
We have a normal process after the election each year. We do a reorganization of the Board. I'd like to thank everybody for the past year. It was very enjoyable, a lot of work. We got a lot of laughs, actually, which was nice for a change, and I'm looking forward to next year. And some would like to make a motion for someone for chair? Someone would express like being chair?
I will make a motion that Mr. Patrick Tropiano be appointed Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I have some discussion. I will make my annual appeal, as I do every year since I got here. Positioning a chair is one of many hours, obviously. I didn't realize how many hours I actually spent on that job until it was over. But more importantly, Patrick, my advice, and you can take it or leave it, that's up to you, but when I was in that position, I vowed and made a pledge that I would never make a decision to a department head, to Mr. Sullivan, at the time was Mr. Andrews, anybody, Boards of Commissions, anybody, without three votes of this Board, Town Council can verify what I'm saying to you. When I was in that position, Mrs. Begley and I, I think it was one of the more important votes, I know she took many votes, but, and I supported her wholeheartedly, was that I'd never signed a document without this Board allowing me to sign that document. There were a couple of occasions where, through somebody else's improper planning, that there was an emergency signature needed, and I gave it to him, and within an hour Janet had those documents mailed to the Board. So my advice is, and by charter and law, is that the Chairman of the Board is not allowed to make decisions for the Board, and I know you know that, but I make this speech every year, so just bear with me. And I think that's very important, that, you know, there's been jokes about these two guys in the shower talking about me naked and all that, remember that? And it's Alan and Peter I'm talking about, at the Y. But, you know, it's important that, that we have an open meeting law. We shouldn't be doing round robin stuff. We shouldn't be coming in here on Tuesday nights and, and being surprised by anything, because those discussions are supposed to take place here in front of the people, not in Town Hall, or at the Y for these two birds. And so that's my advice, and I would hope that you would try to do that, and try to do things here on Tuesday night where they, where it belongs, especially when it comes to decisions, signatures and things like that, and making sure that all seven of us here at this table, I know Mr. Sullivan is not required, neither is Town Council, but we never did anything during that year without Rich being involved, because every decision we make, obviously, he has to defend it. So that's my advice. I make that speech every year, Mr. Chairman, so I didn't want this to be an exception. Thank you.
Well, just as a background, on our charter, under the Board of Selectmen, is a specific piece written that by majority, the Board of Selectmen will approach the Town Administrator. So it's actually part of our regulations.
The what?
It's part of our regulations.
What's that?
On the charter.
I didn't hear it.
There is a piece on the charter that says by majority, the Board of Selectmen will speak to the Town Administrator.
By majority?
By majority.
Right. I'm talking about, I was talking about an individual Chairman doing that, without the Board.
That's what I'm saying, is we're actually, we're required to have a majority.
That's correct. That's what I said.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, five zero zero. Congratulations, Patrick.
Thank you.
Condolences, Patrick.
Now we got trouble.
You get to ask for a clerk.
There's trouble in River City.
No, there isn't.
All right, so now we need a clerk.
I move Selectman White's side for clerk.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. And there I will hand you.
The golden, the golden packet.
Golden packet. And it's always in a pretty golden color, too.
I did not pre-check it this time either, by the way.
Good news, God knows what's in there.
Good news.
I already did check it.
Thank you.
You will.
All right. So next.
And just as a general observation, any grammar mistakes or things of that nature that are now detected, we'll know who didn't pick up on them.
Yes.
Before the meeting, won't we now?
Oh, that's a challenge, I think.
Very much so.
It's gonna be fun.
I think that's a challenge. All right, announcements, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Next week, in this room, at six-thirty on Wednesday, the twenty-second, the FinCom will hold its annual hearing on the Town Meeting Warrant Articles, the budget, and Town Moderator will also conduct the pre-Town Meeting at the same time. What happens is, is the FinCom goes through the warrant one by one, they talk about it, there's opportunities for citizens to come up and ask questions here, the moderator throws in her two cents where applicable, and it's a very informative opportunity to get a jump on what's gonna happen at Town Meeting, so that you can show up and be educated as to what the issues are, what the process is gonna be. It's highly recommended, even though only a few people tend to take advantage of it every year, it is recorded.
Yeah.
It'll be on WCTV. Second thing is, today, the Beach and Tourism Advisory Committee were hosted by the New Marriott. We had a sort of a seminar, if you will, and introduction to what the Beach and Tourism Committee is doing, with a lot of the area businesses that are involved in tourism. Went very well. We had Paul Crips from the Plymouth County Development Council and Destination Plymouth showing us the way to setting up a Destination Management Organization in Wareham that would be able to fund advertising, not through the town, but as its own organization, be able to fund marketing efforts, advertising, get out on websites, and do all the things that Plymouth has been doing for over twenty years and doing successfully. We also had Representative Gifford there, and it was, it was quite an occasion. So at this time, I'd like to announce the rollout of the DiscoverWareham.com website. You can go on there, take a look at it, the media would, would make a note of that, it's just DiscoverWareham.com. You'll see what it, what it looks like. There's already a few things up. We hope there are gonna be a lot more in the future. Thank you.
All right. I'll fix him. No, I have, do you want my announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
You can do yours now. Oh, you know what?
I'm last.
We're not gonna wait till last. Mr. Holmes, please.
No, I just wanna continue on the beautification issue. I noticed that a lot of people are out dealing with the street, and the sand that's there. I guess I'm not supposed to tell you what to do with it, y'all know what to do with it. And, you know, I know it's, it's still not really all that warm yet, but I'm telling you, people are really, it's starting to catch on, this beautification thing, and I say, I saw a guy tonight blowing sand, I mean, it was like we had a, it was like he had a burn permanent there. So I'm not sure if blowing that sand is the best thing to do for you, but he did make the street in front of his house look clean, so whatever we can do to get the sand up, and then I saw the, I saw the.
Street sweeper.
Street sweeper, thank you. Out the other day, I was following him. So I know that Mr. Sullivan is, and Mr. Mark are doing the best they ca, Dave is doing the best they can to get out, but we're gonna start getting the emails, when's my street next, when's my street next? Remember, we only have a few people, they're doing the best they can, and they will get to you, but unfortunately, we have to wait. Then, of course, the next piece of that is, in a few weeks, I start seeing these little green little shrubs, those little stubs starting to come out of the ground, what do you call those petunias, those little, not tulips.
Crocuses?
Crocuses. So you know what that means. Pretty soon, on the curb, they're gonna start coming up through the curb and on the sidewalk. So, you know, my suggestion is if you can get to your sidewalk or your curb early, then we'll keep them short and try to keep it clean. It's a, it's a tough job, but you know, when that stuff starts growing out and you get the sand, I mean, it really looks, it looks awful, so do the best you can. If you're unable to do it, physically unable to do it, call Mr. Sullivan, and we'll find some young people to come out and help you with your street and sidewalk. Thank you, and thank you for all your efforts.
Mr. Slaven, please.
Sorry. We have an announcement through the State Mass Municipal Association. Let's see, what we got here? April fifteenth is the second anniversary of the Marathon bombing. Moment of silence is to be observed at two forty-nine PM on Wednesday. This is being asked for by Mayor Walsh of Boston, inviting all local officials and communities to join in observing, but one Boston Day. Again, it marks the second anniversary, and that's all I have on that. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, I have several. I know that Mr. Holmes is the trash czar, so may I be the trash czarina. Sunday, I traveled.
Junk, junk, sir.
No, 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 trash. I'm talking about garbage.
Oh, God.
Okay. Sunday, I drove down R.D. Stillman Memorial Drive, and other than, you know, the usual grunge, there were no large trash bags. Monday morning, when I drove up Stillman Drive to go to town, on the right-hand side of the road, there were six trash bags, four of them white and two of them black. Now, they couldn't have fallen off your truck, because they would have gone on to the right side of the road, okay? Pick it up, take it home, and get rid of it. And don't do it on the road, it's just nuts. And if you have the excuse that you are renting and you don't have a car, your landlord is responsible for making the trash in your rental unit disappear. Stop throwing things out of the window. So I'm going to make.
What was the street?
Stillman Drive. R.D. Stillman Drive, Memorial Drive.
Agawam, seventy-three.
Okay. The pictures around the Selectmen's Room are the product, most of them, of Grumpy Conway, who was a longtime employee of A.D. Makepeace. They represent different seasons of the year. If they weren't taken in Wareham, they were taken in Plymouth, close enough. I want to thank our Town Moderator for making them available to us for their hanging. The Coffee Hour this week sponsors, Mary Nyman, who is a local artist and author, will be there at nine, Mr. White, at Agawam Village. On April twenty-third, Anita Shreve, who is a well-known authoress, it's a Thursday night, will be at the Town Wareham Free Library from five to six. There's also a dinner later on, and the tickets are a hundred dollars. That dinner's gonna be held at the Katana's Club. In order to get tickets, you need to dial two-nine-five-two-one-three-four. The YMCA has this Sunday, eleven AM, the Healthy Kids Day. Make sure that you have an opportunity to go up there and see the good stuff that they And I just want to say that I have, this is sort of announcements, I have really enjoyed working with Mr. Slaven, who despite being left-handed and colorblind, can hang pictures really well.
They're staggered.
Nicely staggered?
See that?
Yeah, I see that, yeah. Is that it? All right, I have nothing, so citizens' participation, anyone here to speak to us this evening?
Oh, they're both banned.
Oh, boy, I knew those two hands were gonna come up.
Go ahead, sir.
Are you on the agenda?
Are you on the agenda? No. Okay. Nope, come on down.
We're just jumping in on ya.
Just state your names for the record, please, and then you can tell us what you're here for.
Michael Park.
Glenn Taylor.
Meg Allison, Hallway, Taylor.
Okay.
The reason for us coming today was, we're with the Relay for Life in Town Committee, and we are looking to get permission to hang a banner across the road like they had for Wareham Celebrates America, to let people know when the date is, what it's all about. We're trying to get more people involved in Relay for Life in Town, and it's our fourteenth year, so we wanna push it. So we don't know how to go about doing that, or how to see about doing that, so we're here to do that.
Town Administrator.
Town Administrator, yes.
When is the relay?
Relay is the twentieth and twenty-first. We changed the date from.
Of June.
Of June, sorry. Changed the date so Saturday at three o'clock till Sunday at eight in the morning.
The Town Administrator.
What specific location is that?
There's only one place to actually hang them. It's over by the old PB gas station between a fire department and a fire department office building.
We quite often have Vanos across there.
Yeah, no, they, they wanted to hang, somebody else was down to hang one further down and such, so.
For what I understand, that's the only spot in town that can be used.
Well, maybe you could get, get to the Town Administrator.
I'm gonna give you my email address, we can set up a time, too.
Okay, 'cause starting Saturday, May second, the whole committee and some other people are gonna do what we call, we're gonna paint the town purple, so we're gonna put ribbons on residential property that let us, and we're gonna paint the storefronts of whatever stores allow us to, and put banners up in front of the stores and things like that. We really wanna push to get more people involved this year, so. Last year, we raised seventy-five thousand, this year, we wanna raise a hundred thousand.
And that's that nice purple color?
Yes, that's why we're all in purple tonight.
Sound like that color?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, you will, I had to say it, 'cause for Alan, doesn't know what a color it is.
Yeah, last year, we've had twenty-five teams and three hundred participants, and over five hundred people came and walked from town. So, and we'd love to invite the Selectmen and all the other town boys or anybody else to come down and walk.
You had a nice fish fry, too, I heard.
We had a fish fry last year.
Oh, the fish fry was awesome. But we're really trying to raise awareness about the event, so it's not just the teams there, like, there's so many things that the teams do around the track, and there's things for face painting, and entertainment, and music, and you could just come and do a few laps and reflect, and there's a luminaria ceremony that if you've never been to one or experienced that, it's just beautiful, at around nine PM, I don't know exactly what time, but it, and the, the whole track is lit with luminarias in remembrance, or in support of someone battling cancer, and it's just, it's amazing. And it's something that kids, if you're looking for something to do on a Saturday for a couple of hours, and for your kids there, there's food, it's just, there's just not enough awareness of the, of the event, and we're just trying to raise that.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
Do you have a website? And if so, why don't you tell us where that is, what the site address is, so that people can go on and?
If you just Google Relay for Life.
Right.
And then keyword Wareham, you know, type Wareham Relay for Life.
Okay. That'll take you to it, okay.
And we have a base page, Wareham Relay for Life, too.
Okay, good.
And you can, you know, start a team, or join an existing team, or find someone that you know, just by searching real easy the name or the team name.
Yeah. We more wanna let people know what it is than just relay, people that wanna be involved. We want the whole town, just come do a lap, walk around, you're gonna know everybody out there. It's all Wareham people, so, and everybody's been touched by cancer, so it isn't.
And each tent, yeah, each tent does like different activities, excuse me, and it's just, it's just a lot of different things to do.
Awesome.
You guys are active, nineteen thousand, a little overraised.
See how easy it is to find it?
You need some, you need some help there, so pitch, pitch again, ask one more time.
Yeah, no, we always need donations. Most of our donations come in late, 'cause that's when everybody turns their money in. We call Bank Night, so everybody, all the teams turn all their money on Bank Night. So right now, we're more than double what we were last year, money-wise. So we're definitely raising a lot of money this year.
Do you have pledge sheets, sheets, pledge?
We do have sheets, but it's really easy to do it online, too.
Yeah, it's just online, so much easier.
And if you're online and you don't wanna put your credit card information in there, if you're on a team, or if you're on a person, there's a little thing that says donate by mail, and a PDF document comes up, and it just has like participants' number there, and you can just fill it out and mail it in.
Okay.
I can show you how to use it.
No, we'll pay for donations, too.
You could always come down to the relay event, donate money to us, so we dare to take money, we sell things.
Throw money at them.
You know, we have a paint night at midnight that night, come down and do paint night with us. There's always hamburgers and hot dogs. Come by my site, you get a free hot dog if you want, just come by.
He's out, he's in.
Free for donations.
Not a midnight.
Hot dog, that's it.
We also have a mailing going out tomorrow to a lot of the local businesses, not asking for a donation, but asking for their support to be able to put a ribbon, a purple ribbon on their storefront or their door, just to make, or a poster that explains what the relay is about, and the, and the dates and times for the event.
May I ask, on behalf of the Board, but I didn't just get your permission, could you supply the Town Hall with some purple ribbons?
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely.
If you take them to the Selectmen's Office, I'm sure that you're gonna see a whole lot of people wearing them. Sorry, boys, for not asking first.
It'd be nice to put them on the columns, actually, in the front, if we can get them lit up.
We have beautiful big, some people might have took them down.
They don't run, though? Do they run?
No, they do not.
No, 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 they don't run.
I've had them on my garage all winter, and they don't run.
So you can put them on the column in the front. We're gonna put them on the front.
And then we should put on the marquee a few weeks, sorry, a few weeks right beforehand.
Right.
Yes. That was one of my next questions.
The sign out here, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So get the information over there.
We will.
Get the ribbons, and we'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hold on.
Mike, just put your name on them.
On the lightbulb?
Hold, hold on a minute. Go ahead.
If I might, if you look around this room right now, there are five people sitting here, starting with Mr. Titlebaum, to me, our esteemed Town Moderator sitting right back there, look at her with the light green jacket on. Every year, one or more of us clutter the town of Wareham with campaign signs. So if you could contact us, and we could go to those same people who allow us to clutter the town and put purple ribbons up on their properties, I think that would make quite a splash for you.
Oh, that'd be great, 'cause we actually have signs that we want.
It's easy to get in touch with us, and we all know how to get at least a hundred, and Patrick uses bigger signs than most, so he'll need bigger ribbons.
Good point.
But we all have, and Mrs. Smith is sitting there, and I know she, we all support your cause, so get with us, and we can get these things to all of our supporters, and I think it'd be great, and that we can do to help, obviously. But there's an idea for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I did wanna, thank you. I did wanna point out that Alan was trying to keep up this year. I beat you. He had the big, he had the big signs, too. It was, he was jumping right on it. All right, so who else? Dave, no, I think Sandy wanted to come down, Dave, so.
You can go first, I'll follow.
All right, come on, Dave.
I thought we banned David.
Dave, I have down here, except Dave. So this is, I'm gonna give you a sort of a okay here.
You have to go mulligan.
I'm giving you a mulligan.
All right. Dave Walton, District Three. Judy beat me to the punch, but before I say anything, I want to say congratulations on your new appointments, and congratulations to Mr. Slaven on his reelection. I'm trying to remain calm and collected, but you people know how I feel about rubbish, and I've seen the same things that Judy saw. In one place, there are three or four white bags, a couple of greens or black, and then further down the road, there's a couple of white ones. Now, whether that's all because the snow has melted and, and people have decided they can now get rid of the rubbish, 'cause they couldn't pile it in the snow in front of their yard, too weak to throw it over the top of the banks, or too lazy to go to Marion and get rid of their rubbish, or maybe we should thank them for being nice enough to put them in bags, instead of just throwing out the door like they throw coffee cups and pizza boxes, they're in a bag, that's maybe something we're, we're gaining rather than complaining. But it's sickening, and, and I've said it before, and, you know, you can just get tired of saying it, but I totally agree, Judy, and it's sickening to look and see that in the side of the road, the snow's gone, and that's the first thing we see is the rubbish. That's, that's pitiful. Now, the other thing, I would like to ask a question, I think I know the answer, but is there any way legally that the town can possibly ban package stores from selling nips? Is there a way that we could put a two-dollar surcharge on each little nip bottle? I am getting sick and tired of seeing them all over the road. That's the big thing for the drugs and the alcoholics, and, and the reason I'm saying this now is I've seen them on the road, the other day, I was over at the CVS, and there were three or four in the parking lot of CVS right, right, right up the street here. If you go along the railroad tracks on Merchant's Way, they're everywhere, but within ten days, different people unrelated to each other, not from the same group, but on Main Street in Wareham, drank it down, tossed it in a shrub between Bello's Law Firm and the chiropractor's corner, and then on another occasion, right on the corner in front of the flower shop there, drink it, toss it in the shrub. Now, I'm talking about ten o'clock in the morning, I'm not talking about after dark. Now, if this crap is going on in this town, we're gonna find some way to stop it, I don't know if we can, probably legally we can't, but those little nips, if, if the cost went up, perhaps it wouldn't be as easy to get them, or, or if, if, you know, I don't think package stores need to have them on their shelves. I mean, they're great for gifts on occasion, or, years and years ago, I remember I worked for a company where the boss used to give one to everybody at Christmas time. Oh, that's, oh, well and good.
You had a cheap boss.
Cheap boss.
Yeah, yeah. But, but no, this is, this is, this is pitiful, and there's a lot of it going on, and I've talked with Sandy back there, and when they, and the garden club that picks them out of their flower boxes at, at the parking area right in, right in Wareham Center, on Main Street, when this sort of stuff is going on, I don't know how we're gonna stop it, but, but my God, if we want any class in this town, hey, here we go again, you've heard me say things like that before about our town. I love it too much, and I don't like to see it get beat up that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy, come on down.
Thank you. I guess we're on a roll of trash talking tonight.
There's a lot of trash talking going on in here.
Sandy Slaven. Joe Liggett was supposed to be with me tonight, and he pigged off, so I'm here by myself. We're on the Conservation Commission, and the town of Wareham has a continuing hearing regarding redoing, upgrading Little Harbor, and as they're going to clear more of the parking places that have been covered over by dunes and extend the, what do you wanna call them?
McAdam.
Road.
Parking areas.
Parking, well, extending the, the railing that went along the parking area, so you don't fall down the foot from into the parking area to the beach. And we were thinking that maybe people out there might be willing to spend about fifteen, twenty minutes a night or during the day to go down and pick up trash that's collected in the grasses around Little Harbor, before this construction and reconditioning of the, of the beach starts, it might make it look better. So I'm just saying, if anybody's got a few minutes, just go down to Little Harbor, take a trash bag with you, and take the litter that's been caught in the grass, and it, it will make the, make it easier to transition the work that's being done at that site. So that's it.
The, there are three clubs in the high school. One of them is the Code Club, one of them is the Honor Society, and one of them is the Key Club. Mrs. Franklin, Mrs. Sennelly, and I don't know who the third one is, and then JROTC.
And maybe they're listening to us tonight.
And they are required to put in a certain number of community hours. So, um, if you're watching tonight, guess what? Call Mrs. Slaven.
And it's certainly safer than trying to pick up along Stillman Drive when the traffic is not doing thirty-five miles an hour.
Oh, you've noticed that, too? Anyway, um, there are at least four groups in the high school that are required to do ser, service hours, um, and I would suggest that you talk with my pal, Palladino, um, and get him to, you know, get some of those community hours committed, not just to Little Harbor. Pick up anything.
But, I, I was, to follow up on the relay for life, Alan and I, for years, have gone out there and done our laps, very thankful to have survived two cancer treatments. So, it's a good turn, it's a good cause, get out there and support them. Walk your laps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
One little point on that also. Uh, the grass and stuff over on that side, uh, unfortunately, is loaded with ticks, so if, if it gets a little warmer in the season, anybody's gonna go in there, they gotta be very careful.
Where are you deep?
It's already tick season.
I'm, I'm just glad to hear that you, you intend to grant the, uh, ability to do that.
Hasn't, Karen hasn't completed.
Okay, you, you seem to imply that the work was gonna go forward, so I, we'll hold you to that.
She can't imply that. That would be a violation.
Pick up the trash, whether it is or it's not done.
Correct. All right, uh, all right, so anybody else want to speak to the board this evening? All right, we'll move on. Next up, appointments and interviews, what do you got?
I have an appointment to the Veterans Council only. The other one didn't make.
It's in there, not?
Yeah, it's in there. It's in the top four there.
Yeah, I know. Um, Tyler Litchfield is not present tonight, but he has, in fact, um, attended a Veterans Council meeting, um, and participated, um, at the meeting. Um, and the recommendation from the Veterans Council is to appoint him. He is a member of the JROTC program at the high school. Um, he actually came in first in one of the competitions in the past month, and I can't remember which one it is. I think it's, um, was the Honor Bowl, maybe. Very nice young man, and I would recommend that, um, okay. So, um, Tyler A. Litchfield, seven fifty-three Main Street, Wareham, Mass, to a term to expire no later than June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All right, so, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, next up, licenses and permits. Uh, we have Church of the Good Shepherd. Is anybody here? No.
The application, um, is an annual one for the Church of the Good Shepherd slash Project Bread, care of the Reverend Dan Burnier, two fifty-three Charge Pond Road, Wareham, Mass, for the use of town roads for the fifth annual Greater Wareham Walk for Hunger, which is to be held May third, two thousand fifteen, one o'clock PM to four o'clock PM. The walk starts at the Church of the Good Shepherd, goes down Sandwich Road to the Church of the Nazarene, along Route twenty-eight, before turning onto Depot Street, and then to Minnit Avenue to Main Street, and then back to the Church of the Good Shepherd. All of the documentation in terms of, um, applications for use of town property are here, um.
Is that a motion?
And then that is a motion to grant.
Second.
Okay. He keeps beating you. All right, motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Uh, next, Wareham Little League.
Q, come on up.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Corino DiCanto.
Known as Q.
Known as Q.
Thank you. Um, can you just speak briefly about what it is that you're looking for, Q?
Uh, I'm here to apply for a permit for our annual, uh, Little League Parade, Opening Day Parade, um, from the Tremont Nail Factory, along Route twenty-eight, down Charge Pond Road to the Fields.
And the date is April twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay, and a rain date of May third?
Yes.
Okay, eleven-thirty in the morning.
Okay, I have one question. Uh, does, um, Atlanta folks still, uh, keep folks over there?
Yes.
Do they still?
Yes.
Over at Tremont Nail?
Yes.
Okay, so they're still using the property? So, you just gotta ask them. Um, just, they'll, they'll say, okay, you know, that, whatever, but just let them know, so that, just give them the privilege of, you know, letting them know that you're gonna do it, okay? Just run down to his place and just tell him.
The other thing that you need to know, Q, is that, um, you're gonna have to start on the other side from where you're gonna start.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, your staging area will be different?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Then I move that Wareham Little League, Inc., care of Corino DiCanto, forty-four Charge Pond Road, Wareham, um, be granted use for their annual parade, starting at Elm Street to Route twenty-eight, to the Little League Field on Charge, Fields, on Charge Pond Road, on April twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, at eleven-thirty AM, rain date, May third, two thousand fifteen, same hour, eleven-thirty.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion?
Just a question. Where are we actually gonna start this from? Because the drawing kinda shows it coming out of the Tremont Nail Factory.
Just they're aware.
We just had that discussion with them. We just had that discussion.
So, make sure we're gonna actually start, not on the property itself. We're gonna start on the other side of the bridge by the, uh, school and stuff.
By the Little People's College.
Yes.
Well, I wanna know.
And you won't even need, what's his name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Um, all right.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Q.
All right, next up, discussion and possible vote on Comcast contract.
Just a second, one more. You got something on that, Mr. Titlebaum?
Well, yeah, uh, last week, uh, the Cable Advisory Committee met, heard at length from our attorney. Uh, there remains an outstanding issue of who's going to pick up the cost and what the cost will be, uh, to run fiber, uh, from this campus, if you will, Town Hall, the multi-service center, over to the WCTV studio. Uh, we're waiting for Comcast to come back with an estimate of the cost, and from there, we still need to discuss the allocation of those costs, you know, between, uh, whether the cable TV station picks it up, between whether Comcast picks it up. Uh, so, there's been a bit of back and forth about that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you schedule this again on the twenty-eighth. It may well be that we have to initiate, issue a second preliminary denial of license and ca, carry it on for another thirty days, because Comcast claims that they need time to analyze the costs and get the people out here to measure things, and so on and so forth. So, that's what the status is. You know, nobody's, nobody's gonna turn on their, their, their Comcast television and, and find that it goes off like a pumpkin. Uh, we'll just continue to, uh, issue what's called that preliminary denial, which allows us additional time to negotiate, get facts, et cetera. So, it's a lengthy process, but it is what it is.
Any questions of the board?
No.
Thank you for your update.
All right.
Thanks.
Uh, special town meeting and warrant articles. Uh, are you ready for these, Mr., um, Sullivan?
You should have all received a copy of the updated budget, uh, which would be the main one. Also, within there, you'd see the EMS budget, the water pollution control budget. Uh, the school committee has voted a budget number, which is in line with, uh, with what works to balance out the budget. So, uh, unless you have any questions on there, I would suggest.
So, the capital plan was number one, which is number five.
The capital plan, I, uh, received additional information today on one of the items, since we're doing it as a whole grid. We're gonna hold off on that one till I have that squared away.
So, then the budget, and we're ready for that. I saw the budget. Everybody's done the budget, right? So, we can have a motion to, uh, about the budget?
Motion to approve.
Second with a question.
Okay, motion, a, a motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, and seconded by Mr. Slaven.
Yeah. On the budget, Derek, I was looking through it. I noticed, like, on the electrical charges in different departments, some had substantial increases, and others had no increase. I know our electrical costs go up, and of course, we have the offset with our, uh, credits, which doesn't show, of course, on the expense side.
All right.
But, I was just curious why that was inconsistent like that.
Yeah, some of them, like water pollution control, we're actually keeping that level, level funded, because with the, uh, with the solar contracts that we have, uh, water pollution control, we can transfer money back against their line, but some of our other budget departments, we cannot.
Okay.
So, that's, in Fall Town Meeting, what I'd like to bring forward is, originally, when we went to, to back up, originally, when we went with the solar contracts, they were supposed to be credited against our, uh, our bills.
Right.
And for whatever reason, NSTAR was unable to do that. It's almost like they, they created these, uh, these, um, solar credits and stuff without ever thinking it through. Uh, so, we were left in sort of a lurch as to how they would send it back. Now, it's coming back essentially as a revenue, if you will. So, in Fall Town Meeting, I would like to create a receipt, receipts reserve for appropriation account. So, that way, we can budget out of that line, and we can reduce our, um, electrical budget lines, and we can use the monies for anything else, or to offset the budgets.
Okay.
There's several pieces, but I was able to figure almost all of it out. There's a few body changes, different places and stuff, but these are all things that we talked about, because we had really cut back our services too far for all the departments. And the school department did step up and, uh, work with us for the dollar numbers that we needed to have finally. Uh, I see the capital lease information. I think everything is there, just, we'll see what the capital items are. There's a few things in there, but I'm not too worried about them. I can explain them.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Titlebaum?
I just, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, it's been a while in coming. Uh, I know it was a lengthy process in terms of working things out with the school department, uh, but I would like to thank, uh, Selectman Slaven and Selectman Whiteside for their time, uh, working with the town administrator to arrive at a budget solution. Again, I know it was arduous, it was time-consuming, and I appreciate the work they did on behalf of not just the board of selectmen, not just the town administrator, but on behalf of the town in its entirety. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, next up, Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund. Motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, next up, Community Preservation.
That's been.
Uh, we've moved that.
Yep.
Right, that's moved over. Uh, let's see, street layouts, we, we can't do that one, right?
Correct.
Because we're still waiting for the planning board.
Still on hold.
Okay, so let's go over to the special. Line item transfers, have you got that together, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, I'm trying to pull up some items right now.
It's okay.
I don't have them in the grid, but I'm gonna give you the most up-to-date that we have right now. I received, uh, this afternoon, or this evening, at five fifty-nine PM, so.
Is, uh, is it enough for us to vote on?
It would be right now. I, I think it would be appropriate, and I can run right through it.
All right.
We would transfer from the town accountant salaries to the MIS data processing salaries, the amount of three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
How many, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How many of these do you have? No documents.
He's counting.
It would be, uh, about, it would be nine.
Totalling?
Totalling one hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars.
That's considerable, though.
Let you read twenty-five of these things.
No, ninety, you can read them.
Next week, I'd like to read them to thirty seconds.
Why don't you read the nine?
Okay. Uh, the next item is Board of Health salaries, three thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars, and that's being taken from the town accountant salaries. Veteran Services, you know that we've, we talked about the veteran services, that we've had that large increase, and that is the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that's being transferred from the planner salaries. We have that overage for, for two reasons. One, we did not hire a planner this year, and two, we've had an, uh, an employee out on workers' comp for the entire year, of which we reimbursed sixty percent. The next one is an, it's an inter, intra-departmental transfer, and it's moving from inspectional salaries to inspectional, uh, expenses, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Mr. Moore is a contractor, so he should not be paid out of the salary line, he's paid out the expense.
It's a subcontract, right? Ten ninety-nine.
Yep. The, uh, the next line is transfer from police expenses to police salaries, twenty thousand dollars. I'm happy to announce that's the only transfer within the police that's within their own budget.
That's amazing.
Fabulous.
The next one is from town accountant salaries to the library salaries, three thousand, fifty-eight dollars. We did ratify that contract this year. Uh, the next one is from library expenses to library salaries. The reason for that is they were using, uh, through the library, they're using some of the grant funds and such to, to pay for the, for the expenses, and then, uh, want that to be transferred up to the salary, so they could have the extra hours this year. How much is that? Eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Is that your total list? No. I'm sorry.
The total's one ninety-one.
No, are you done with your nine?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Dramatic pause. Uh.
Just a minute.
The, uh, the next item is from municipal maintenance salaries to streetlights, the electricity, thirty-five thousand. Uh, we were able to have the LED light upgrades to the buildings. We also had the solar program for some of the other buildings, but that did not help with the streetlights that were, it's looking, not only were they slightly underfunded to begin with, but with the, uh, with the dramatic increase, NSTAR's hit, it really took a toll on the streetlight salary. We still have the fifty thousand dollars to fix the streetlights and upgrade them to LED. We're trying to get the, uh, the, it's not necessarily a grant, but if you remember, uh, uh, NSTAR gave us additional credits, so we're still working to try and get those for our streetlights, to maximize the fifty thousand dollars. And the next item is from municipal maintenance salaries to municipal maintenance repair, maintenance and vehicles. So, again, the total's one hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, and they're from all within the, uh, the general government lines, the...
I'll move them as read, totaling one hundred and ninety-one, seven seventy-one.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero. Okay, um, Health Insurance Trust Fund.
We're still waiting on the audit from Powers and Sullivan. They've completed the onsite work, and I've told them that we, basically, we need this before the twenty-seventh.
Hold up a little.
So, just so everybody understands what that is, we have the, uh, the healthcare trust fund from when we are self-insured. The last time we used that would have been in September, because we moved to the Mayflower Municipal Health Insurance Group on October one. So, now, between the runoff of Blue Cross Blue Shield, Harvard Pilgrim, we want an official audit to state how much we have in there, what the balances are, and, um, to see what sort of decisions we have to make. We will have a surplus in the health insurance line in this year's budget. The reason for that is we did not know if we'd be accepted into the Mayflower Health Insurance Group when the budget was put together. Uh, if you remember, they needed to vote to accept us, so it was not a guarantee for us to get in there. So, we, we budgeted like we were going into that group.
All right, so we'll wait for that. OPEB Trust.
That's the, uh...
Got a number for that, or anything, no?
No, that, we're still, if, if we don't have to transfer all the excess in the health insurance line within the budget, I would like to put a minimum of twenty-five thousand into the OPEB Trust Fund, and that will immediately pay dividends on our management letter and on the future calculations for OPEB liability.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna skip the police contract until we vote on it, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll, you can give us that, you can give us the number now, if you, well, wait till we vote on it. And, uh, amendment, uh, to the Junk Dealer's Bylaw.
You said we're gonna put that off for further study, so we'll get all the things detailed in it, because the junk law covers all kinds of businesses.
Use your mic.
Yeah, you speak up.
The way the junk law is written, I've asked Rich Bowen to go through it, it covers all kinds of businesses. It includes churches, almost everything you can think of, it sells something used.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. First meeting, we've discussed it. I haven't heard that here on a Tuesday night, putting this off. This, this was put on here for the simple reason that we have at least twenty businesses in this town under the current bylaw, and under current... under the current bylaw and under current opinion of Town Council that are operating illegally. They do not have a license. So, we had several options. We could go out and shut them down, let them do what they feel like doing, or this was the last pitch moment to try to get something at Town Meeting, which doesn't guarantee anything. I quite frankly, don't think Town Meeting is going to vote for any more junk licenses, but who knows? And then, those licenses, licensed wannabes would still have to come here and, um, request through this board to get one of those licenses. Further study means that, uh, now you're talking November, so there has to be some determination as to whether or not the chief goes out, and it's not the board of selectmen who are going to do that anyway. Anybody can call the chief, say this is an illegal business. So, this was, this was something to help somebody. We can't pass a, a policy that says, hey, we know you're illegal, but it's okay, go ahead till November. We can't do that. I don't think Town Council would approve of that. I won't speak for him, but, and that's all this was, was to try to, uh, give those folks an opportunity. They are operating illegally, there's no question about that. Um, and we know it, the public knows it. And if we're just going to let it go, then, I mean, it's not fine with me, but at this point, if we're going to let people have an illegal business, whether it's junk, Mr. Chairman, or it's something else and we know it's illegal and we're going to let it go, then where does it stop? So, that's what this was for.
Okay.
If you want to further study and change the bylaw and do all that stuff, you can do that anytime. What this was, was to try to give tho, those people who are out there today, and some have closed, by the way, an opportunity or a hope to be able to stay in business and make them legal.
Go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, with regard to further studying the matter, uh, as we all know, further study is a motion made at Town Meeting without a backup plan to actually study the issue, to appoint the committee to study it, to look at the bylaw, to see what businesses fall under this sort of thing, to see, uh, to create a body to actually study it, uh, is just a way of killing something and I don't think that's, I might be misunderstanding this, but I don't believe that's Mr. Slavin's intent here. If he does want to form a committee, I've got experience doing exactly that and know how to write the motion for further study. Uh, we did it with the dog bylaw study committee. It culminated in, uh, the town getting a pretty good dog bylaw out of it. It solved the problem. It took more time, that's for sure, but nonetheless, it came out, I think, the right way. And if that's what Mr. Slavin is proposing, then that, then that's what I would endorse, but I like to hear him say that that is in fact what he's proposing.
Okay, anyone else? Anything else you want to say?
No, basically, we wanted to come back in the fall on actual article, getting this thing done properly. I discussed with Town Council because when we looked at it, we realized that it covers a whole bunch of businesses that are out there. Uh, and if we go ahead and put through what we have here, uh, we end up having to close down fifty or sixty people still. And that's really not solving anything. I'm, I'm not real crazy about going into, uh, you know, the Salvation Army store down the street on Cranberry Highway and saying, hey, by the way, you got to close. Or to go to the, uh, GameStop over in the mall and say, by the way, you got to close, because they take in used and sell used. Uh, go over to the church on, uh, over at Center Park. They have a room downstairs next to it in the community hall that takes in and sells used stuff. We're going to have to tell them, they can have to close. The twenty-five licenses won't begin to cover what we have out there. I just am not in the opinion to go ahead and do something and rush to do it because we didn't realize it had more implications than we expected. The way it's written and the way we would have to enforce it, we'd have to close down a whole bunch of people and I don't think that's the right thing. I think it's not a problem, put it on record, we're going to do this, but do it in the fall when we have everything lined up properly. And that's my reason for it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll take a second whack at this because I don't, I'm not sure I'm being heard.
Go ahead.
We have businesses, and I'm talking about Salvation Army and I'm not talking about the game store. You can try to murk the waters here. We have people who have set up shop and all they do, all they do, there's nothing new. It's all secondhand. It's like a yard sale. It's a flea market store and you know what I'm talking about.
You can't pick and choose, Steve.
Well, you know what I'm talking about, yeah, but you can't allow them, now that it's here and they're there illegally. There's not a question, there's not a question about most of these.
I understand, but you can't...
And now you're just, and the board is going to say, um, let it go?
No.
That's not, that's not what I heard Mr. Slavin propose at all.
You're going to let it go for a year?
No.
Okay, whoo, everybody relax. Let Steve finish this conversation.
Which means that maybe November, maybe next April, it goes off for another year. Hey, listen, if that's what you want to do, that's fine, but let's be clear that you don't control it. This board does not control us. Any citizen can call the police department and file a complaint. And the chief, who has set precedent, by the way, we have set precedent in this town to go to these stores that I'm talking about and have been trying to bring education to the board over the last three or four months. We have precedent where the chief has gone, written citations and asked them to stop selling their goods and close the doors. So, it's not going to stop because we further study something. What I'm trying to do would, would actually, if we can get some licenses and, I mean, we've got to get the ball rolling, but to just further study is a simple question of allowing the board, and that's all this motion is, not to do with the bylaw, just to change the number of licenses. That's all I was asking for.
Mr. Whiteside.
Um, Mr. Holmes, I, first of all, I want to, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention because it has been something that you've been working on for a long time. I think, um, one of the meetings that you were absent, we did in fact discuss that there were loopholes in the way that this might be written and that the twenty-five, as Mr. Slavin stated, would not cover the people who are genuinely doing the business. Part of the problem is that, um, enforcement in this town isn't a big E-word and that's not meant as a reflection on anyone who works for the town. We happen to be understaffed in virtually every department, um, including the building department and including the police department. Some of these violations are, um, Board of Health, Building Department, or Police Department issues. And I think that the message was loud and clear from you certainly and others, um, that, that we don't want it to look like a junkyard or a big giant yard sale or whatever. I think that there has been progress, but again, I would caution that we, I hate further study. Um, I want it done yesterday like you do, but I want to do it right.
Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, you know, notwithstanding Selectman Holmes, what might seem the board shifting away from what you had intended here, uh, we're still grateful that we have something on the warrant to act upon, even if it's not exactly the precise action you had contemplated. This at least gives us the opportunity to go into Town Meeting, ask if they want to set up a further study committee, describe how it would be constituted, what their purview would be, what they'd look at, what they'd come back with, when they'd come back with it. Because without this being on there, we wouldn't even be able to do that. We'd have to wait to fall to set up the committee. So, at least by getting this on here, we gained six months on the problem. So, I, I think you can, you can look at it in that light and see that it still accomplishes something, even if it's not the instantaneous solution that we had hoped for.
Okay, so I need a motion. Somebody give me a motion. Somebody give me a motion, one way or the other. Favorable, further study, whatever you want.
I think the way it's set up, you have to use the further study because we really don't have anything that says we're going to do the other...
So, give me a motion for further study then.
Put a motion for further study and in that motion, basically, we'd, we'd come up with a program with that further study, a motion at Town Meeting where we would put a date certain of basically fall of 2015 Town Meeting for an actual article.
To establish a committee to report back to Town Meeting?
Yes, with an actual article.
Right, so who's to make...
With a plan.
Somebody make the motion, please.
An actual article.
It's an article. That's, that's always the process is to say that they will come back with a report containing an article.
Mr. Slavin made the motion, second?
I got a whole bunch of pieces.
Second.
All right, so we got a motion, then the motion, let's make it clear. The motion says we're going to, uh, establish further study with a committee and a time certain.
Correct.
Okay?
Of the Fall Town Meeting.
For the Fall.
Fall Town Meeting with a report.
Everybody agrees. Okay, fine. So, motion's made by Mr. Slavin, it's seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
The motion, uh, the warrant article as created was a very simple statement, to authorize, uh, the board of selectmen to issue, uh, and to change the number from five currently to twenty-five. Now, there was some discussion on whether or not we could lower that number, raise that number. It was a very simple article. So, now you're saying that it's okay to, to change the article, basically with this motion, to set up committees and all this other kind of stuff, to discuss changing the quantity of licenses. Is that appropriate?
Actually, looking, looking at the bylaw as well, because the bylaw has...
But that's not what the motion, that's not what the article says, I don't believe.
The, uh, while we're doing is further studying this, but we're setting up a committee, uh, why don't we have the moderator come in? Come on down.
Educators, please.
Yes. Number three.
The article before you is, as you say, to change the number in the bylaw. So, either you want to vote in favor of it would be your vote, or you want to not vote in favor of it, or you could choose to further study it. So, it would be within the scope, if you chose to further study it, you want to give the voters some method of further study, so it would be within the scope to do that.
To further study the number of licenses. They're not talking about that, Madam Moderator, through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
What I'm hearing here is they want to set up a committee, this further study motion sets up a committee to review the entire bylaw and what is included in that bylaw and then report back to Town Meeting in November. That, to me, sounds like an entirely different scenario for that article based, as opposed to the origination of the article, which is says, I want to change the number from five to twenty-five.
Let me look at the actual...
It just sounds to me like you don't allow us to change a lot of other articles.
Well...
And yet, this is an entirely different scope than what I'm asking for.
That sentence, that particular sentence of changing, let me find the actual bylaw. The, the sentence that you want to change reads, "The selectmen may license not more than five suitable persons to be dealers in and keepers of shops principally for the purchase, sale, or bought of junk, old metal, or secondhand articles in the town." But it also goes further, and I don't have the rest of it, it's all part of that one paragraph.
But I was only asking to increase the number from five to twenty-five.
So, if you're, you're changing just that one sentence, you're, you're actually, it's part of that whole section. So, they would have the authority to go in and look at the whole section.
If that's what it is, then that's fine, but it just doesn't sound right to me that you, you don't allow too many changes on other things. But yet, this discussion tonight has nothing to do with the quantity, has to do, he wants, they want to further study the entire bylaw, it sounds like to me. And that's not what the original article was.
But I think, Mr. Holmes, that when you, you're looking at going from five to twenty-five, you have to take and look at what is the definition of a junk dealer and that all comes within...
It says used, driving your thing.
The article itself and it, it's a very broad definition because a junk dealer is anybody that sells anything secondhand, which then opens Pandora's box to other, I, I know where you're coming from.
It just doesn't make a whole lot of hoop to me, but if you say it's allowed, then I want to make sure it's allowed because otherwise, now we're wasting our time till November. And secondly, it's not even appropriate, it couldn't be accepted if the article is changed the way they want to change it to further study and create this committee and review the entire bylaw and all that stuff. Then you get to November and somebody says, oh, by the way, that was a flawed process. So, I don't want that to happen.
All they're saying is further study. So, what that committee and how they decide to further study it is up to that committee, whether they take it a step further. That's not, you're not giving them a charge at Town Meeting, you're giving them the opportunity for further study. So, if you set up a committee and that committee decides that they want to go beyond that because once they get into the zoning, because it also, if you go a little further, the zoning limits where you can have junkyards. So, there is more to it than just changing the number and I think once they begin to look at, I want to further study going five to twenty-five and that's part of that whole paragraph. It opens up more questions that have to be answered.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chairman.
I think in order to come up with a number, you have to understand the whole thing before you can come up with a number.
Right.
So, you, it requires to look at the whole thing. Go ahead.
And also, remember that the governing body is the Town Meeting vote, so somebody could amend whatever motion is made. We, we are just voting now on...
I understand what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, so motions made and seconded, is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining, okay. So, it's four, one, zero, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I had for the, uh, we have two, two of the capitals, one for the spring special, one in the...
Oh, you have the numbers?
I do for the, uh, spring special.
All right, give me the spring special.
Which I, I'm going to transfer out, this is actually just, this is eventually going to go into the FinCom book tomorrow.
Yeah.
If you see the grid on there, this is for the special. The first item you'll see is what department, an item description, the cost, the funding sur, source, and whether we're going to do it via purchase, borrow, or lease.
Okay.
Item one, our six image cast precinct tabulator bundles, which are also known as voting machines. And that's, uh, $39,000 and we would use the FY15 certified free cash. The next item is Harbor Master and if you see the, uh, we have an item to, to, uh, another article for $20,000. So, this is a full-size four-wheel-drive diesel truck and equipment. The cost is $20,000, of which, um, $13,500 would be the yearly lease and the one-time outfitting costs, such as putting the, the light bars and those items on the truck. So, that's paid for from the harbor service permit receipts.
Excuse me, Mr. Sullivan, $20,000 for, is this a new diesel truck?
Oh, this is a lease.
Lease. So, the cost of lease is $20,000 a year?
$20,000 a year is not the cost. There's an outfit of $6,500 on there.
Yeah. So, it's thirteen five?
$13,500.
How much is, how much is the total lease? Four?
Four years.
So, thirteen five times four, about a $60,000 truck?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is Community Service Officers Parking Enforcement. This is a mid-sized four-wheel-drive truck and equipment. The cost for the one year of the lease and the equipment is $13,400. That is the year, the lease will actually be a three-year lease of $8,900 a year. The equipment is $4,500 and that's paid for Article Four of the Fall 2014 Town Meeting. If you remember, when we, uh, talked to the residents about the, uh, the parking programs as well as the kiosks, this is to have enforcement officers in those. Also, we will be able to use that vehicle and them for activities such as cleaning and, uh, basically, community, community enforcement, if you will, bylaw enforcement and such. We have no extra vehicles and this is an acceptable use of those, uh, the funds from the kiosk program. If you, uh, the kiosk program, we pulled out $80,000 in fall. We've paid, uh, approximately $11,000, just under, in signage, new signage that we're developing. We had complaints from residents, um, and, uh, and vacationers and tourists and such. So, we do have the new ones that we're putting up. If this goes through, there will be $55,000, $724.14 left in the account.
Okay.
The last one is the Water Pollution Control Facility. If you remember, their front-end loader has essentially died. This would be to purchase a 2015 front-end loader. This vehicle, the total cost, not including the lease of this vehicle, is $155,000. That also includes a, uh, a V-plow for them to pump, be able to put on there and do the punch. However, when you see the cost of NA, the reason I'm putting it in there is this is actually in their FY16 budget, so we're just seeking the authorization.
Yep.
So, they will purchase it and go through the process of purchasing it now and the first payment would be in FY16, of which they have the budget, numbers budget.
Okay.
On that V-plow on the catapult, is that something that the town will be able to use also?
There would be, there would actually be no reason why you couldn't, that's, uh, but you... That's, but you, the enterprise fund and the town are separate, but whereas the town also does work for the enterprise fund, plowing, getting down to their pump stations. I could see, you know, realistically, are you supposed to do that? No, not really, but if we can't help each other out, we might as well just give up.
Well, but you can merge the plowing together.
Yeah, absolutely. We could pay their plow, if their people are prong fuses, you could pay them.
You know, when you're, when you're plowing out there, all the town departments have to come together.
Yeah, there's no reason we can't work together.
All right. Just asking a question. Okay, any, any, anybody want to make me a motion, then?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstaining, it's five, zero, zero, okay. All right, so that takes care of that one. All right, so let's jump to the police contract. So then we can, we'll go back to the article afterwards if we approve it.
Move to approve? Or do you want an introduction?
Yeah, let him give some-
Background?
Yeah, background, please. You know, the folks out here would like to know what the heck we're voting on.
Yeah, when you, when you vote in open session on the police contracts, you're usually just voting to ratify it. Then it gets brought to town meeting to actually fund it.
Right.
With, so this contract spans actually five years. You'll see it's broken up into two separate contracts, because you can only legally do a three-year contract. So the first one is for FY-12 and FY-13. The second one is for FY-14, F through FY-16. This will be the first time, if, no pressure, if you pass it, that we will be-
No pressure.
That we'll have, we'll have all the contracts funded, not in, and not being in arrears, since I've gone through them. I honestly don't know the last time that's been funded. I'm, I think you're talking probably about 2000, 2003 or so.
Yeah. Well, you're really putting a lot of pressure on us here.
So, I appreciate the, all the, the work that was put into this, and in getting all of the, the contracts put together.
All right, so could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Any discussion?
Both Contract One and Two.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, it's unanimous, five, zero, zero. All right, now let's go back to the police contract on the special town meeting, which says, "Police Union."
Motion to approve the article.
Second.
Motion to approve, okay. Motion made by Mr. Slaven, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, it's unanimous, five, zero, zero. Okay, so that takes care of our town meeting warrant for now. And next up, twenty-four-hour business, Mr. Titlebaum.
None.
Ms. Whiteside? I'm sorry, I don't know. I keep wanting to do you, because I'm used to that. Mr. Holmes?
I think we do now. I think I'd like to get it on the record. In town council, I guess, could, could suggest whether it's inappropriate to have a motion or to make some kind of an official statement on behalf of the town of Wareham, that we do not. At least, this board does not support or encourage illegal businesses in our town. We are now aware of illegal businesses, and I'm not saying that the board, and this is what's confusing, because now, tomorrow morning, in the, in the underground mafia of the junk world, it's okay to be open, because the board is further studying this. And, and I understand the town meeting, I understand all that, but that's not what gets into the street. They've already made the decision and said, the Board of Selectmen said that we can stay open, because they're going to try to get us some licenses, right? And we all know that's not true. But we need to have some kind of a statement here, that this board does not support illegal businesses. And by this discussion that just took place here for the last thirty minutes, we are not telling businesses who are illegal that they can stay open. We're not giving people that authority. We don't have that authority, first of all.
All right, hold on a second.
But we need to, we need to have something here that gets us off of the hook.
All right, let me, let's ask town council about this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate, it's my opinion, and I believe backed up by state statute, that if you're in the business of selling secondhand items, you need a junk license. That being said, if you look at Division Two, Article Four, it's titled, "Prosecution for Bylaws Violation." Section One, whoever violates any of the foregoing bylaws, and that includes the junk bylaw, unless other provision is expressly made, shall be liable to a penalty of not more than two hundred dollars for each offense. And I'll drop down to Section Three. It shall be the duty of police officers and constables of the town to promptly prosecute all violations of the foregoing bylaws. That's what your bylaws say. And if there are complaints to the police department, there is a mechanism to assess a two-hundred-dollar fine, which, if it is not paid, can be the subject of criminal prosecution in Wareham District Court.
Mr. Titlebaum?
I, I guess I just don't agree with the characterization of what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to legitimize, we're, we're not trying to say it's okay to run an illegal business. We're trying to legitimize appropriate businesses that already exist, that never, ever imagined that they would be caught up under this bylaw, because frankly, the word junk was grotesquely misleading to them. I've spoken with consignment shop owners, the person who's down on Main Street, explained to her, the council, and in my opinion, he was correct to say, she was swept up under this. That shop has been there since nineteen eighty-nine. In no way or fashion would I have ever contemplated this business being junk. In no way or fashion am I ever interested in shutting them down just to show blind obesance to a stupid law. And that's what we have on the books. That's what this proposal to further study is meant to do. And we have to exercise good judgment. We have the ability, under the Supreme Court of the United States, to discretionarily enforce the law. Mr. Bowen can opine on that a little bit as well, because it suggests that there is discretion in how the law is enforced. Discretion, to me, doesn't mean you just let everybody run willy-nilly. Discretion, to me, means you exercise common sense. And I think that's what we're all trying to do here.
Anybody else?
Mr. Titlebaum, I'm not disagreeing with him. I'm not disagreeing with him. All I want to make sure of is that tomorrow morning, when I walk out of my door, the Board of Selectmen, and I want a statement of some kind that says, "When somebody comes up to me and says, 'Oh, last night, you guys said it was okay to run this illegal business until the committee comes back with further study,'" that's not accurate information. But that's what's getting out there, because we're voting on this bylaw thing to put it on town meeting. First of all, it's up to town meeting to approve licenses or a committee or anything. Then they have to come here and get one, if it's approved. But we are not allowing people to remain open in an illegal situation during this waiting period. I guess maybe that's the easiest way to put it. We are not authorizing those people to keep open. If they get a complaint, and the police go down there, and they get a citation, then we're not going to interfere in that. That's got nothing to do with us. It's a criminal issue.
Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess maybe I'll just put it this way. Regardless of what happens between now and the time that town meeting actually makes a change of this bylaw, be it in a couple weeks or a few months, the fact that it is being reviewed over the next couple weeks or the next several months does not give an immunity defense to anybody who is operating a, a business in violation of the bylaw.
The whole, the whole idea of this was that we didn't want to be forced into closing places down, because we have to enforce what it says. The idea is, if there is an issue with a particular business, and there's a complaint, then we follow through with the procedures that have in place. But the problem is, is that, once we go ahead and change something at town meeting, then technically, we're, we're required to close everybody down who doesn't fit in those twenty-five licenses. And there's probably fifty or seventy-five people in town that qualify.
I didn't take the can, I didn't take the cover off the can, guys.
It doesn't matter. But the bottom line is, when we looked at it, we realized, hey, we have a real issue here, because the, as Claire read, it says secondhand. That secondhand in that foolish bylaw opens up to everybody that sells anything used, no matter what it is. And that was the issue we came up with.
All right, so I think-
I'm happy you found it, but the problem is, I'm unhappy, because we have a problem.
I like that, and, Mr. Chairman, I think that satisfies me. That the Board of Selectmen is not granting immunity-
To anybody.
Anybody.
I think that works for me.
All right, next up, town administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We hit on many of the subjects, but one thing I just want to read off is, yesterday, President Barack Obama signed a disaster declaration relief for a severe late-January storm that paralyzed ten Massachusetts counties. The declaration will make federal aid available to reimburse state and local governments in the ten counties for seventy-five percent of the eligible snow removal and infrastructure repair costs incurred due to the storm of January twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. The only problem is, this is Mema, FEMA, excuse me, staying where they only go for one event. We wanted to extend for almost the entire month. And the governor was out there lobbying, doing everything he could. I mean, obviously, we're not going to look a gift horse in the mouth. And we're, we'll be happy to get at least some monies back. Could, could be anywhere between a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars back to the town. You probably won't see that next fiscal year. We're still getting some monies back from, from Nemo. Yeah. So, but this is, it's good news. We appreciate all the efforts. We would have loved to have had it for the full amount, because we spent over seven-hundred thousand dollars on snow removal, on a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar budget.
Mr. Menon has all the paperwork in place for us?
Yes, they've been working on it. And one of the items, if you look in here, it also talks about infrastructure that had been damaged. One, there was a seawall down in Pinehurst that was damaged. We've put in for reimbursement on that. But you're talking about, if we're doing that on our own with no reimbursement, between forty and sixty thousand dollars, which we do not have to do right, in our budgets to do right now. We're well aware of it, and we have sought reimbursement for it to add it. The, the other item I have is, yes, the street sweeper is out there. We are also looking at contracting with, with private firms. I think the most telling thing you can do right now is, if you go to Google Maps and you start going down, you can actually, it looks like there's, yeah, you can see the sand. It's amazing how much is out there. And part of that was because of the, the salt shortage. We had to use an extraordinary amount of sand. So it's, it's interesting. So our spring priorities, obviously, are, are street sweeping, but also the crosswalks. If you look, most of our crosswalks have been, been wiped out. So they're obviously a major safety issue. Yes, they will be the color green, Mr. Titlebaum.
Good, because you see the color green right here on the title bomb.
The semitaries took a lot of abuse as well. That's where we put, put the energies, and we're still looking-
Fortunately, no one's complaining, right?
You do. And the brush cutting. Everybody forgets that the, the brush starts growing in on the roads and can be a major safety hazard. I think last year, the first time, you actually saw some areas cut back on the brush. So we appreciate all the hard work from Municipal Maintenance Department and the efforts that they're putting forward. So thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
All right, next is the consent agenda, authorization to sign bills. We, we only have one, what? There's nothing after town administrator. There isn't one of mine, what do you got? Liaison reports? I don't have one of mine.
Wow. No, no liaising will be discussed.
No. I have, do you have liaison reports? All right, so does anybody want to give a liaison report? Does anybody have a liaison report to give?
Oh, just, I put in, I handed out, I took the old permit application from Janet.
Yep.
And I added some things for you, y'all to look at. It was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but it's not. So we'll put it on agenda in a couple weeks. And what I have on there, on the second page, is a list of things that I would recommend that we require when somebody applies for one of those licenses.
I saw those added.
Right?
Yep.
So if we could just get that up in a couple weeks and go through it for discussion.
Anybody else have liaison stuff? Go ahead, Ms. Whiteside.
I, I just, being new to the job, if you all could, the selectmen could let Mr. Chairman know when you're going on vacation, if you know you're going on vacation, because I'd like those things to actually be on our calendar on a go-forward basis. There's a time that I know I am not going to be here, so that, and there are times that Mr. Titlebaum knows. I know it's difficult, but you know what? We have the application on the computer system, so let's use it.
Yeah, whatever we, whatever you can, if you can tell us ahead of time, that'd be great, when you're not going to be here, because it does make things a little easier. Because, I'll tell you what, a lot of times, we want everybody to be here for a particular discussion, and we just won't put those discussions on that night. You know, we'll put them on another time. So when everybody's here to discuss it. Okay. You have reports?
Sure do.
All right, Mr. Slaven, you're up. Go for it.
All right, here we go. YMCA, Barbara Sullivan, and I met last week at the Y. They are going to be promoting a program called Healthy Wareham. We're going to be engaging different businesses in town, individuals, et cetera, and work with the kids all the way through to adults in trying to promote, again, a healthy wareham, with a part of the emphasis on the opiate abuse problems we have in the town as well. I'll update the board as this goes along. The first meeting was this past week. Again, May fourteenth, at ten o'clock. Most likely going to be at the library now. The lieutenant governor's coming in. We have seven communities plus Wareham. I'm waiting for final numbers. Somewhere between twenty and thirty-five people will be there from the different towns around us, selectmen and town administrators. I've contacted SERPAD a few days ago. We had decided to update the master plan we talked about a while ago. SERPAD, we've basically been signed on, and they will do a program for us starting July first. You have to apply usually by December or January in order to make the first half of the fiscal year. So we made the second half. Last night, the planning board met. Walmart was supposed to be there asking for help or assistance. They have an issue with a gas company. They have a particular gas line or something that has to be installed for them, and the gas company's not responding very quickly. My concern is that our program that we have with Walmart for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for public safety equipment and the hundred thousand dollars for upgrading of water pollution control is based on them getting occupancy, occupancy permit, sorry. And some of that money, we had planned to use for the fiscal 2015 year. Most likely won't make it right now, so Mr. Sullivan will make adjustments, but there's not much we can do, but just let everybody know. The other piece that was very disappointing last night was, we had on the agenda Baypoint. The chairman of the planning board, of course, is also the chairman of the Prudential Committee. And he was not physically going to be able to be at that meeting, at least for the first part of it. He did make it after eight o'clock. In the meantime, the Baypoint executives and their counsel, Mr. Cirque, decided that they would ask for an extension. There's three phases to this particular project. One is what they call definitive subdivision. The second one is a site plan. The third one is a special permit under the change that we did for a hundred acres or more and a seventy, past seventy-seven whole goss, to allow, basically, for like cluster zoning or different ways of doing zoning, which is under our basic minimums. So they decided, because on the third item, you have to have what's called a supermajority, which means four out of the five members have to vote for it, they did want, did not want to take any kind of a risk with only four members there. So therefore, they asked for an extension. The extension is May eleventh. I apologize to the forty-plus people that came to that meeting, hoping to be able to have input and discussion. It didn't happen. The answer, the water department was there, same thing. And I'm especially disappointed for the people at Baypoint, because as Mr. Holmes also sent a little note off to me, I imagine it cost them quite a bit of money to physically come to that meeting last night with all the engineers and everybody else, lawyers, et cetera, and get nothing done. It's not the way we do things, and we really need to- Uh, it's not the way we do things and we really need to think about these people who are our clients and our customers and really do a better job. This is a ongoing thing. We've had a letter come in to us recently about, I'm not going to say which committee this, doesn't really matter, but just the same kind of thing on and on. We need to fix this once and for all.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just comment with Alan on this. You know, it's not like the Wareham Water District meeting last night was a surprise to anybody. Well, I heard somebody say they didn't know it was last night. But I would assume the chairman knew. And to schedule an important hearing like that, and, and I'm not going to beat you up, Alan, it's not your issue. And we've talked about it. But I'm talking about the planning board now. To schedule that on the same night when they knew the, the chairman wasn't going to be here. Well, who did?
They came to town hall, town hall office scheduling.
Oh, so it was our office. So, at some point, Mr. Chairman, after this is over, after it's over and votes are taken, up or down, one way or another, I'd like you to sit down and just write a letter to the people who, who are involved and just say, hey, you know, we apologize for this, you know, we're, we're going to work to do a better job. Because here's the thing, this has been, not just this issue, but other businesses are treated this way, Mr. Chairman. And they all have friends in businesses. And if they come to them and say, hey, you know, how are you doing down there in Wareham? Oh, this happened to me, that happened to me, oh my God. They're turning their friends off from coming and we want to, we want to bring them in. We don't want to be pushing them away. So, I think at some point, maybe it would be nice if you, after it's over, you can't do it during votes, but after it's over, if you send a nice letter to them, I think that will help to start some of the healing.
When it comes up, we'll bring it up again.
Yes.
Okay?
Last thing I have, and then I'll be all done, sorry. During the last couple of weeks campaigning, et cetera, you're out on the streets on Main Street in particular, by the post office, et cetera. Um, speed limit on the Main Street's twenty miles an hour.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
That's a surprise.
That's a nice theory.
Yeah, and of course, on the crosswalk, when you stand on the crosswalk, that means they're supposed to aim at you as they go by you.
Pretty much seems that way.
So, I don't know what to say, really. You know, I know we're, we're not shorthanded, we don't have enough police to do the job it is, but we need to start enforcing the speed limit. When cars are going down Main Street at fifty miles an hour or better at times, it's just absolutely crazy. It's not safe. We have a lot of older citizens and I'm not picking on them, but they go to the bank, they go to the post office, they're taking their life in their hands half the time. Because you watch people driving down the road and they've got their stupid cellphone up in their rear as they're driving and have a clue what's in front of them and they're just flying down the road. It's time we stop this stuff. We have the issue with littering. These are all things that are enforcement, you know? I keep telling everybody, the only people who are going to fix this thing is ourselves. There's nobody coming from the state or the federal government to help us. It's time people act as volunteers and do something. Because we don't have the money to do it, so we need your help. But the idea of, on Main Street, which is narrow enough as it is, the bump belts that everybody hates were designed to slow the traffic down. All it's done unfortunately is make it like a little narrow raceway for cars. And there's no place for the pedestrians. They go off in that little loop there, they go, one step and they're gone. So, again, I'm just asking people, a little common sense. You don't drive forty, fifty miles an hour down Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, once again, just briefly, you know, CETA, uh, gave us money. Uh, I don't think we took any money out of the actual budget. But I think we bought those things with CETA grant money. We have the equipment, it doesn't require any manpower. We put the trailer down there, it's got the radar in it, it's got the camera in it. Set it up, take pictures. Because Mr. Slaven says enforce it. What are you supposed to do, jump in front of the car, slow down? We yell at them, I know, but we have the equipment in place. Let's, let's put that equipment out there like other towns do and take a picture, right? And let's do some enforcement.
Give me a radar gun, I'll go out there.
Unfortunately, that's.
Like I say, I just, I feel bad for Kevin, the police department, but we need something done.
Okay, uh, anybody else for liaisons also, right? Okay, uh, town, uh, minutes?
Yes, um, I move the approval of the minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, with the corrections as noted.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero.
Um, I move that we approve the minutes of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as corrected.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero, thank you.
He has to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Four zero one.
I move that we approve the minutes of March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, again with corrections.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so four zero one. And, uh, next would be Mr. Bowen's bill.
Move to approve.
The bill is.
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms., Mr. Slaven, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
But the record, it is the timeframe on it?
Yes, one twenty-one fifteen to two twenty, twen- fifteen. Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn would be inappropriate. Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Slaven, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great night and a good week.
Good night, Wareham.